All right, it's wonderful to be here with you and to be invited to speak to you about one of my favourite things, which is mission. And the invitation to come and to, well, to grapple with your theme was great. Compassionate service, intelligent faith, godly worship. And it made me think about my views on mission and on the ideas that have shaped me and which caused me to drill down to the underlying principles that I think are at work here and for the work of the church. So for me, the bedrock is that mission is about Jesus. Now, that's no surprise to anyone in the room. If there's anyone who is shocked and surprised by that, maybe, you know, seek spiritual counselling in the break or something, all right? The other thing is that mission is about relationships. It's about being a friend to Jesus. It's not optional for us. We can't decide, it's nothing to do with us. And this new discussion on mission that's taking place everywhere in the church is not going to be like the decade of evangelism, at the end of which there were fewer people in church than there were when we started. This missional push is to take us forward into the church, which of course, being God's church, will always be growing and always be kind of moving on to something that's going to be better than what it was in the past. So all those people who keep saying, "Oh, it'll never be like it was." No, it won't, and that's just okay. So mission includes, of course, discipleship, which is following, and it includes evangelism, which is telling. And so it's not the work of a select few. People love to go to those lists in Ephesians and say, "Well, some are called for this and some are called for this, and I'm not called to mission." Sorry, everyone's called to mission. All of us are involved. It makes us ask big questions. I loved the presentation just before lunch about the big questions asked when we do Spirit of Invitation. So I thought about some of the people who formed me, and I thought particularly about some of the work of Brian McLaren, who I'm sure you know very well, who says that when we think missionally, we kind of think about, you know, does it mean more Christians? Does it mean better Christians? Does it mean an authentic missional community that's going out and working for the good of the world? What does it mean for you when you think about what it means to be missional, to have a missional church? I think it means all of those things and more. And so we have to make the central job of the church to be focused on Christ. Now, that shouldn't seem to be an amazing thing to say, but occasionally we get sidetracked. More of that later. So for you, compassion, intelligent faith and godly worship, all happen in community. You can only have community when you have relationships. But unfortunately, the usual reaction to telling people that we should be ready to go out and live the great commandments in an active and a vocal way, and to prepare to go out in the community and tell our own stories, usually looks more like this. Which, you know, a bit unfortunate really, isn't it? And I love a quote from a guy called Lionel Windsor, who has a blog site, it's called The Briefing Blog Site. And he says, "Normally, we look for commands when we need reason to do something unpleasant." And he says, "When I ask my kids or commands them to eat their vegetables, they want exact specifications. Do I have to eat all the vegetables? If not, how many? Does it include the vegetables that are squished into the potatoes?" But it's a different story, he says, "with chocolate. If I put chocolate in front, there is no command required, because there's no reason not to eat chocolate." And the same thing applies when we start to talk about mission, or when we're commanded to evangelise, if you like, by Jesus himself. If we have to ask the question, "Do I have to do it?", we're already in a difficult spot. We're saying really, "Technically, it's a really good thing to do, but we'd really prefer not to do it unless we really have to." And that tells the church usually that something's gone wrong somewhere. Christians belong in community. Everyone say, "Ah, for the poor gummy bear in the middle." Okay, when we're not in community, what does that say? Does it mean if we don't think it's about building community, that we're not quite sure what it meant when Jesus came to help reconcile the worlds to God? Can you be reconciled if you're alone? No. You have to be in relationship, you have to be in community. And so ministry for us has to be about mission, about pulling people into relationships, searching for connections. And we help each other when we tell our stories and devote ourselves absolutely to the task. So bedrock, Jesus, underlying principle number one, Christians belong in community. Underlying principle number two is that mission isn't primarily about filling our churches. That may be a side effect, but it is not the reason we do it. Yes, and if you can just watch that for a while and I'll speak while you watch it, right? There is a danger in thinking that mission is just about filling the church, right? And so we know from the Mission Shaped Church report that came out of the Church of England, which kind of kick-started things some years ago now, that worship is at the heart of our missionary church, that our church is going to, if it's about mission, try and reshape itself in relation to the culture in which it's located. That does not mean mirror the culture. It means be in the culture in a way that you can have conversations which draw people into relationship. And that the church, if it truly has a missional heart, it exists for the transformation of the community it serves. I want you just to think about that for a moment. Think of your parish church. Does it exist for the transformation of the community it serves? Just think about that, and then ask yourself the next question. Where is that community? Inside or outside? Do you exist for the transformation of the community you serve? So it's not about filling our churches, but it's primarily about seeing our churches as filling stations, if you like, where we are nourished, and then to stretch the metaphor, we are refuelled, and then through worship and fellowship, sent out into the world. And if you are hoping that there's going to be a magic bullet in this presentation, there is not, all right? There is no such thing as a magic bullet unless you are buying a blender, when I'm told it's a very good blender. There is no programme, apart from the programme that Jesus had, to call us in His name and then send us out to the ends of the earth. So mission isn't about a programme. Wouldn't it be great if it was? Wouldn't it be great if you could just buy it in a box, do it, and all of a sudden it's done and you're good to go? But it's not about that, because it's about every single person. So that's everyone in this room deciding that you want to be in a relationship with Jesus, hopefully you've already decided that. And secondly, that you want other people to be in a relationship with Jesus too, and then seeing what you can do to make that happen. So we know that churches are called to be these wonderful places, we are called to be serving communities, and that's part of what you're talking about, compassionate service. We're asked to be welcoming communities, learning communities, worshipping communities, discipling communities and transforming communities. And if all of that comes together in your church, then you are probably going to be ready to take your full place in the mission of God. And we need to be sure though, that in order to do these things inside and outside the church, we're using the right vocabulary. At a recent clergy conference in the Diocese of Everton, we used some of the re-imagining church and the missional church materials. And what we've been doing, it's our centennial year, we're quite young really, we're just 100, I don't look it, do I? But we're just 100, or maybe I do. Anyway, and so what we're trying to do is we're collecting 100 stories of faith. So we're just asking people to say, "Who is Jesus for you? And what's it like to be in Christ?" And so at the recent clergy conference, we had all the clergy talk to each other about who is Jesus for them. And people went on lovely walks and had great conversations, and they used wonderful language about transformation and healing and hope and salvation and wholeness. And it was just gorgeous seeing the kind of language that was being used. And it was the same language we're seeing in the stories that we're collecting from laypeople and from ordained people, young and old. But then we gave out a bunch of different scenarios. Would they be scenario i? I'm not sure. Anyway, you've probably seen these before. Here's one. A young engaged couple in their late twenties, university educated, come to church at Christmas, come and say to you, "We don't go to church, but we want to get married in the church. We want to do it right and get off to the right start." And we showed them this one. A gentleman in his mid-thirties, hands-on father of two, works long hours, who says, "I've helped out in the past with Habitat, the humanity builds, and I run a couple of marathons every year to raise money for breast cancer research, because it killed my mum. I want to help out, you know." And then we asked the clergy in groups to say, "What would you do if that person came to your church?" And all the beautiful language disappeared. It was so sad! And it all became, "Well, we have a programme for that, and they'd have to do this, and if they only come at Christmas, now they want to get married. Well, we have a preparation course that would take this long, etc., etc." But the beautiful language disappeared. And so then we had to say, "Okay, now imagine that it was God's hand in the middle of the back of those people that pushed them through the doors of your church. Now what would you do?" And then all the beautiful language came back again. So we have to start thinking about the vocabulary that we're using, because faced, as I say, faced with these scenarios, many people jumped straight into a programmatic mode, and we had to keep refocusing on what it might mean for God to be doing. So the collection of faith stories is really helping us with our vocabulary, because if you haven't got the vocabulary straight, then because we're talking about being missional, going out, helping people into relationship with Christ, which is the bedrock, as I said, if you're not speaking the same language, it's not going to work very well, is it? So in the early church, we know that people shared their stories of faith all the time, but we seem to be at risk, I think, these days of just giving that task to one or two people. And if we can get it back, then we're going to recapture our sense of wonder in what God is doing in the world. You already heard Archbishop Collins say that, I think you said, that it's looking to see what God is already doing and joining in. And you've probably heard that a lot. So if you see what God's doing, we should be amazed. It's been said, I think, by Eugene Peterson, that, you know, on a Sunday morning, for those of you on this side of an altar, when you look out at people gathered for worship, the thing that goes through your mind should be, "Wow. Isn't this incredible to be here and sharing in the table of the Lord?" And if you're on the other side, it should still be, "Wow. Isn't it wonderful to come and share at the table of the Lord?" So to recapture that sense of wonder and look and see where we're finding God. So we've been quite intentional about trying to tune up our vocabulary, and maybe you might think about that too, and about collecting, intentionally collecting stories of what Jesus is doing in people's lives and sharing them. Because the huge thing that comes when we ask people to do that is they say, "I don't know how." But if you can look at stories of people just like you doing exactly that, then that would be great. Bishop Philip said that, we just had the Archbishop of York with us in the diocese, and one of the things he told us was that he tries to speak to somebody about Jesus every day. And he didn't mean at things like this, or in a service, or preaching. He meant someone who he doesn't know if they have a relationship with Jesus or not, that he might meet on the street or in a coffee shop, and he just tries to speak to somebody about Jesus every day. It's about 700 people here. Imagine what would happen if today, during the break at dinnertime, and I pity the person you're all going to pick on, if you all went out and tried to have a conversation about Jesus. Because that's how it moves, right? We have those wonderful stories in Acts about the spirit falling on people and people rushing out and hundreds or thousands of people being baptised. It happened because people went and spoke to other people about what was going on, where they were seeing God at work. And that's the task, I think, of us if we intend to be missional. So one of the things we do is, it doesn't matter who you are, if you come and visit us, we'll tape your faith story. You have been warned. We do a lot of work with Michael Harvey, and so when he last came to visit us, we got him to tell us his faith story. So I'm going to give you a little bit of it now. If you've had Michael here, you know he speaks for great long chunks of time, so I may cut him off in the middle, but I'll give you a taste of it, okay?
My name is Michael Harvey, and I am responsible for starting back to church all the way around the world. As a kind of a young boy at the age of eight, who was dragged to church by my mum, at the age of 11, I was taken by a youth leader of the church that I was going to. And that youth leader then became my spiritual father and introduced me into the life of the church. And at the age of 13, I suddenly discovered Jesus in my life, and it's completely and utterly transformed my life. And so kind of compared with what I was to where I am today, there's been an incredible transformation. So Jesus for me is all about actually kind of helping me and others become who they're meant to be. Well, one of the things that I love is that it's provided for me, people who have not been afraid, who actually kind of disciple me. People who are able to actually kind of say things to me at specific times in my life. It's given me a kind of an array of brothers and sisters who are able to support, and I can then go on and support them and support other people. So it's given, you know, kind of an opportunity for ministry in an area that actually kind of God has developed within my life. And at the same time, I've had an incredible amount of people who've fed into my life and helped me, you know, kind of understand a little bit more about God and how God operates in my life and in other people's lives. Prayer is completely kind of vital in a Christian's, in a Christian's life. So not just kind of us actually speaking to God, but that actually kind of God actually kind of speaks to us. Now, I will never ever say, "God told me to do this," or "God told me to do that." I can sometimes never quite kind of work that out until later on, you know, after I've gone through things. But I honestly kind of think that God prompts us.
Okay. There we go. So the importance of telling a story, of telling who Jesus is for you, who's the church for you, what's important to you, and to be able to do that and share that experience. I wonder when the last time was that you said that to somebody, just in conversation, in a way that they can engage with you, not from a distance like this, where I could tell you about my relationship with Jesus, but, you know, it would be difficult for us to kind of look each other in the eye and talk about what that might mean. But I wonder when the last time was that you did that, you personally, and with someone that you didn't have to do it with? Maybe you could do that between now and the end of this synod. Find someone you don't know and just say, "Who is Jesus for you? If we can't do it here, and if we can't do it with each other, because we all have a vested interest in wanting the church to be healthy and grow, if it's too scary to do it here, it's going to be too scary to do anywhere." So this is a great place to practise. So we're going to listen. A missional church listens, and it listens to one another, but it also listens in the local neighbourhood and in networks that we have. We read the media, we look for patterns, we follow websites, we look at the data that's being provided, we talk to leaders, we talk to city government, especially here in Toronto. We talk to, couldn't resist, sorry. We talk to people at work, we notice where people are gathering, we look for recreational places, and we look in the networks of our own congregations, and we listen, listen, listen. And what does that look like? I'll give you, well, now, I have very tall clergy, I just say that, okay? I'm just telling you that right now. Here's an example of listening. We went out, we, like many of you here, you probably do things like this, you probably, some of you did the Ashes to Go initiative. And we went out to LRT, that's our local rapid transit train station, for the early morning commute, to offer ashes to people, signing with ashes and a prayer. And we didn't kind of go up and demand that people took ashes, we just stood there with bowls of ashes and looking kind of, we hoped, friendly. And so because I would think I was the short one, lots of people came to me and said, "Good morning, sister, could you pray for me?" I said, "Sure, I can pray for you." So, but it was quite something to see people walking off the escalator and walking up to us, and some already with a grey sooty smudge on their foreheads, because they'd come from an early morning church service, but most not. And lots of people who suddenly would rip their hat off, or they would come up and go, "Oh, oh, is it Ash Wednesday?" And you would see just glimmerings of remembrance in some people's faces, right? It's like, "I kind of remember this, I know something about it." And then you'd see people who had no idea, and they'd be saying, "What is that about?" And some person would suddenly have to testify that they knew what it was about, and say, "Oh, it's the beginning of Lent." And they would go, "What's Lent?" "Well, Lent, this season of the church year, went da-di-da-di-da." "Well, why have they got marks on their forehead?" "Well, they've got marks on their forehead, because we remember da-di-da-di-da." And you could see this wonderful business going on all around you. But even more amazing were the people who came up and said things like this. "You came outside." Isn't that an awful thing that someone might say to the church? "You came outside. You left your building and came out." Some people said, "We didn't realise you were still there." That's again, maybe we're not doing such a great job as we think we are at letting people know. Some people said, "Can I still come back to church? It's been such a long time. Can I still pray? I can't remember the words. Will you help me find some words to pray today? Would you pray for me?" People on their way to work, this particular LRT station is near the law court, some people on their way for a trial, some people to go and support family members on the way to the hospital and stuff. It's been said it's our familiarity with the face of humanity that allows us or enables us to uncover the face of Jesus. So how familiar are we with that face outside of our normal, regular patterns of community life? And are we willing to take that risk and go out and look into new people's faces and see what we might find there? Because once you've listened, it changes you. Once we listened to what people were asking us that day, we had different kinds of conversations, starting with, "We should really get out more often." But also about going out and being recognisable, about maybe just loitering in front of the law courts. Now, I know that's slightly challenging, but, but loitering, just to be able to provide prayer, just to be visible in the community, to say, "We haven't forgotten that you're here. Don't forget, we're here either." A missional church wants to do that. It wants to seize every opportunity to get out there. It doesn't want to seize opportunities to say, "Oh, well, you shouldn't be out doing that, because how do you know if those people you gave crosses to are really penitent?" I think God can work that out, don't you? So anyway, you listen, you listen, you listen, and it changes you. So as you listen, you're listening for God's mission. Yes, you're listening to our Christian tradition and to the local context, and asking God and praying over and over again, "What are you doing? How do you want us to join in?" In every parish, it would be so easy to have a group of people who every day pray that. "What are you doing right here where we live? How do you want us to join in?" Because once you do it, and once you catch that glimpse of God somewhere, you can't help looking for God everywhere and noticing God everywhere. And the church, and Stephen Cotrell, who's a great missionary bishop from the UK, said that the church in all its manifestations is that group of men and women and children whose lives have been turned around and centred on Christ, and that impact continues to give birth to new ways of being the church today. So when you listen and you look for God, you find Him. But you can't just listen to the people who like you. You have to listen to the opposition. This is one of our churches, who when we were going to do a housing scheme for people coming off the street, their reaction to that was to go and paint no homeless all over the church, and to send us lovely emails saying that those scum shouldn't be allowed in that neighbourhood. So listening means listening to everybody. And remember that thing about looking for the face of Christ? When you listen to that stuff, where are you going to find the face of Christ in there? So you listen to the opposition, and you listen to those people who are scared stiff, and you listen to the people who have a very small view of humanity, where it needs to be opened up. And you listen to those people who don't even know who their neighbour is on the street, and you're asking them to have a kind of a global view of neighbours and brothers and sisters in Christ. You have to listen to those who are interested and keen, those who are apathetic, that's the hardest group, that's the hardest group, and those who are downright hostile. And seize every, every opportunity. This led to an amazing opportunity. Can you imagine if you phoned a secular TV station and you said, "I'd like to come on your morning show and read some scripture, please." It would be unlikely to happen. And yet because of all this, I was invited on to a breakfast show, not my favourite thing, trust me. A, because I'm not a morning person, and B, because I really don't like seeing the £50 I need to lose on a big screen somewhere. But anyway, that's my baggage. Just pray for me, brothers and sisters. Anyway, so I sat down on the couch, comfy couch, with the TV presenter, they don't tell you what they're going to tell you beforehand, and he said, "Well, now then, what do I call you?" Get through that stuff. And then he said, "Come, I'm going to read you a piece of scripture." And he read me a chunk on the TV of Matthew 25. How amazing. You couldn't pay for that, right? You couldn't pay for that. And so then we're able to say, "Well," I said, "thank you so much for reading that piece of scripture, it's my favourite." And he said, "Why?" And I got to testify on breakfast TV at Everton, right? But that's the thing, a missional church looks for every single opportunity and grabs it, to the point where people will probably say, "Oh, here they come again." But that's good. A missional church listens, listens to the opposition as well as the supporters, and seizes every opportunity. Why do we do that? Because we don't want to start objectifying people. If we don't listen, then all we do is tell people what they need all the time. And we don't see where God is already incarnate in the community, because we think He's not going to be out there unless we take Him out of the church somehow, in some strange, warped understanding of what Jesus and God do. So it's about a missional church being a church with people and not for them. And I know that we are for them, but what I mean by that is that I'm not going to tell you exactly how you need to come into a relationship with Jesus and tell you to change everything that you do. We want to walk alongside and be with you. We don't want to do things to you. And that's, that's huge, right? Because in the beauty of that way or that kind of interchange is that all of us are changed in our involvement with the life of the other. So a missional church wants to change. We want to be changed and transformed by the people outside the church as well. And there's a feeling, I think, often in churches, that the movement of mission is something that happens from the church into the world, and that's not really true. It's going in both directions at the same time. And it allows us to ask big questions then. Are there needs that can be met by offering some kind of loving service? What are the hardships and difficulties and joys and pleasures in people's lives? What do people most value? How are they relating to God? How do people get to know new people in this community? And so the question for all of us in your parish, do you know that? Do you know the answers to those questions for your parish? Do you know the answers to those questions for your street? Do you know the answers to those questions from the person who runs on the treadmill next to you at the gym? And if you don't, would you be brave enough to start asking those kinds of questions? Because then you're going to let the people around you teach you something about Jesus. And you might find that you are going to be used to bring someone into a deeper relationship with Christ, or you may find that those bits of you around the edges, if you have any, that are a little bit dried up and rusty, someone outside the church is going to help you become vibrant and full of life and the spirit again. If you haven't read the series of books that have come out of the UK on Mission Shaped, there's Mission Shaped Parish, Mission Shaped Youth, da-di-da-di-da, but the one I would say grab hold of is called Mission Shaped Spirituality, because it's all about that movement of going out and what that means. And there's a lovely story in it of a priest who freed themselves from their daily work in the church. They just felt they were called to go, and they didn't know what to do about it, so they just started writing in their day timer, "Go." And they didn't know where on earth that was going to be. So what they did, they went out into the street, they taught to people, and they found their joy in ministry again. They found their joy in faith again. They listened, they got the chance to pray with people that they had never met before, right in the moment. And some of the moments were downright dirty and uneasy and messy and uncomfortable, but they were real. And they went home at the end of those days when they went out, feeling so much more in tune with the calling that they had. Now, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do that inside the church, but if we're going to be agents of transformation in this world and really think about the mission of God, we've got to go out. All of us have got to go out. So for the ordained people in the room, you can't tell your people... So for the ordained people in the room, you can't tell your people or ask your people in your churches to do something that you would not do yourself. And for the laypeople in the room, you can't expect your priest to go out and do it for you when you wouldn't be seen dead doing it. We've got to all do it, go out there. And what are we going out to do? We're going out, and I love this Vincent Donovan, when he says, don't call people back to where they were, because they never were there. Don't call people to where you are, as beautiful as it might seem to you, but travel with them to a place neither of you have been before. Because the Judean journey is perhaps not enough to keep going out. We go out from Jerusalem to Judea to Samaria to the ends of the earth, absolutely. But one of the things, Doug Paget, who wrote a great book called Evangelism in the Inventive Age, Doug Paget, a great book, came out, I think, last year. He says, go to the ends of the earth, but then come back and tell us all about it. If we really want to be engaged, and we want to be that missional church that finds out what God's doing, it's no good going out and finding out and never telling anyone back at home. Because we want to see where God is at work, and we want to move out. So missional ministry, missional churches are people who are ready to be changed. When John Santamu came, one of the things he did, we had a youth and young people gathering. And he got everybody up on their feet, it looked like some kind of rally meeting, right? And he had everybody shouting, I am gorgeous, I am wonderfully made. And people just did it, and it was great. And then his question was, do you believe it? Because if you believe who you are in Christ, if you believe who you are in Christ, this task of being this missional church won't seem nearly so hard. All right, I'm gonna ask you to do a couple of things, so if you feel uncomfortable about this, just don't look at the other people at your table, all right? Okay. So, first thing, you need two hands. In one hand, just trace your name, just trace your name. My name, I'll show it, my name's Jane, right? I'm just tracing it, just trace it. Do you really believe that God has your name written in the palm of His hand? If you do, then what can possibly harm you by going out and telling people that their name is written in the palm of His hand too? Now, the second one, don't look at the people at your table if it makes you uncomfortable, just blow on your arm, just gently. Feel the breath on your arm. When Jesus gave the Holy Spirit in a locked room, He breathed on His disciples and said, receive the Holy Spirit. Just like that. You have received the Holy Spirit. You have been empowered to do this missional work. So you're ready to go. Your name is in the palm of God's hand, the Holy Spirit has been breathed onto you and in you, and you're ready to go. And if we go out and do it, what will happen? We will learn an even deeper relationship with Christ through our own faith. Everyone is telling us that. Missiologists, sociologists, evangelists, all tell us the same thing. This is Reginald Bibby, we learn faith through relationships. So you will learn more about your faith through the relationships that you form. And if you want to really know what God is doing in the world, you will find out more about that if you have relationships with people that are outside the four walls of the parish. And the parish will become immeasurably richer, immeasurably richer. So you have to tell your stories, you have to listen to other people's stories, you have to accept the challenges that come, and you have to seize every single opportunity that comes. I'm very long-winded, so I'm skipping pages, you can see me, I'm just, don't say that, right? What will happen? Then we will make disciples, the missional church will make disciples. And making and nurturing disciples of Jesus is an essential call and ministry of everyone, grounded in relationships, one to another and in Christ. There was a group of Quakers in the 17th century in the UK who said, in order to encourage the people who came after them, if we want people to follow God, to know Jesus, to hear the call of the Spirit, they must see something in our lives that leads them to want to know more. So what is it in your life, as a leader in the church, you're all leaders, you were all elected to come, or your vocation has caused you to be brought here? What is it in your life that might lead someone to want to know more about Jesus? And if you're not sure, if you find that a difficult question to answer for yourself, because some of us do, ask someone who knows you well. What is it that I could bring to a conversation? What is it that I could bring to share Christ and help other people to do it? So for this synod, as you, as you go along and as you come into your, into your workshop times, if you could ask yourselves, as you go into each workshop, what is it that you think God is doing in our communities, inside and outside the church? To do some of the wonderful things you're gonna hear about, or to let them inspire you, is there anything you might have to set aside if you were to help people beyond church come and feel welcome and feel that they were important to the body of Christ in this place? And is the Holy Spirit actually making you restless to want to carry the gospel to new places? So as you go on, when you go to things that are about compassionate service, and we follow the command in Ephesians to be kind and compassionate to one another, how will you know that the things that you hear and the things that you feel moved to do are rooted in a relationship that encourages you to do things with people rather than to people? What will you look for to know that? When you go to workshops that are about intelligent faith, do you know what that means? And I'm not being facetious. What does it mean for you? What are the hallmarks of an intelligent faith for you? Could you define an intelligent faith? So when you go home and you say to the person on the bus, or on the train, or just the person on the next treadmill at the gym, I was at a conference and we talked about having an intelligent faith, and they say to you, well, what's all that about then? What is an intelligent faith? Can you tell them? Can you tell them and take the message from here outside? And then when we have godly worship and we talk about what that means, are we willing to be flexible enough to include things that stretch us and take us beyond our comfort zone so that other people can hear the message of God and feel that what God is doing in their lives is valued by the church, which says it is the body of Christ? If it's the body of Christ, is there room for everyone? And if there is, what does it look like? I think that in thinking outside the box and as we go along, there's gonna be great ideas that God is going to give to each and every person here, and you will find a way that you can reach out and speak to someone who does not yet know Christ, or is like one of the persons coming off the escalator at the LRT station. Am I still welcome? Does Jesus know my name? I didn't know you were still there. You came outside. What would it take for you to start thinking about how you personally could be missional? Because until each one of us does that for ourselves, the church won't be able to do it. It's not a programme, it's not something a few people are going to do. We all have to want to do it. So tomorrow, I'd like to reflect on what I've seen in terms of the shaping for mission here at Synod, and see if it resonates with what's happening for us in Alberta. Because if it really is the mission of God or the missio dei, then there shouldn't be two different ones, right? Or three different ones, or 16 different ones. So I can't wait to hear the conversations that you have. I can't wait to see if you're willing to buy the t-shirt, if you like, or, as my dean would say, drink the Kool-Aid, and say, yes, I want to be a missional person. How can I be missional in the name of Jesus? And if you're sitting at the table thinking, that's great for them over there, and, well, he's got to do it because he just told us we had to, and, yeah, she's kind of paid to do it too, but it's not for me, as I said, until we all disprove that, we won't get as far as we're called to do as by the church. And for all the time that we refuse to go out and to speak about Jesus and to think about the mission of God being bigger than the mission of the church inside the church, that the mission of God is the church universal, until we will grapple and take that vision for ourselves, God will work round us. God will work round us, and then we'll find out it's going on outside, and then we'll try and find ways of joining in. I would have been much too chicken to have started my TV interview with a quote from Matthew 25. So God did it anyway. And I thank God for doing that every day. So for now, thank you so much for listening, and you've been very kind, and, yeah, let's just be the church and enjoy learning how to become more missional. Okay.